Thank you.
Well, he's very well working on. He's made cut and boys through quite a few members of the family right now. Beautiful. It's it's got heavily. Populated dark African woods, radiate the following to end grain, cutting boards to the after the long way, right? It's so nice that they're cutting some.
Right, right.
It just sits in the middle of a counter. They're really doing a great job.
Yeah, yeah, now they say that that cutting boards and ballots are the gateway to.
Hmm, there's a lot of pieces when you when you go angry.
Yeah. Right, a lot of little things stood on stood up on him.
How about the operating? Do you want me to ask them? Some people can you hear us? If you can hear us, can you raise your hand?
Oh, raise hand.
There we go.
Captain Jim.
One.
Sweet. Can hear you, but it sounds bad.
Thanks.
Yes, I may see. Couple of them.
We can hear you, but it sounds like you're underwater.
All right, are you ready?
Hope so, yeah.
Select board ready? Good evening. It's now six thirty and I call this meeting to order. Welcome to our town meeting twenty twenty five and this informational meeting. I'm glad that you're here. We meet tonight to share information and to ask questions in preparation for tomorrow's vote. In doing so, we extend the tradition of our local system of governance in Vermont towns, which began in seventeen sixty two. My name is Andrew Hayes and Kevin Eaton is here to assist me with the technical responsibility for Zoom. I'd like to publicly recognize and thank Kimberly Boshnell as our previous town moderator. Thank you for your service. I'd also like to extend a special welcome to new voters who may be casting votes in this election for the first time, either because you have recently joined our community or because you have become old enough to vote in our elections. Well, tonight's order events will be as follows. I have a brief review of the meeting mechanics. We'll stand and recite the pledge of allegiance, and then we have some comments from State Representative Chris Pritchard. And then finally, we'll work our way through the articles for discussion which have been published in the morning. Tonight's meeting mechanics for Zoom, Kevin Eaton is assisting in the evening to facilitate a seamless discussion between those of us assembled in the room and those joining us on Zoom. With regard to those joining us on Zoom, please keep yourself muted. Also, if you will assist and keep your camera muted or turned off, it assists our bandwidth. In order to speak, please raise your hand, which you can find in the reaction section at the bottom, and wait to be called upon. If you happen to be joining us by phone, you won't be able to see us, but you can still raise or lower your hand as well as mute or unmute yourself. Star nine are the instructions for raising a hand and star six will toggle between mute and unmute. Once you raise your hand, please leave it raised unless your question has been answered by someone else's and wait to be called upon. Remember to unmute yourself. State your name, and I ask that everyone speaking tonight state your name every time you speak so that those on the phone and those of us assembled will know who you are and only then begin your comment or question. If you are on Zoom, you may alternatively use the chat function, in which case Kevin will read your question or comment for those of us assembled here. Please, if you do so in the chat, label your message with the article number. And but please do not type in questions before the article itself has been read. When your question is read, I'll give you the opportunity to unmute yourself and ask a follow-up or clarifying question. For those of us in the room, we don't have a microphone stand tonight. We have a microphone at front which will pick up your questions. So if you have a question, please raise your hand. I will recognize you and then we will make sure that you're speaking loud enough that everyone in the room and everyone joining us on Zoom will be able to hear you. I also ask that you state your name so that everybody will be able to know who is speaking. In general, we want to do our best to go back and forth between Zoom and those of us in the room with their questions and comments. Brevity is appreciated, although you have up to two minutes to speak. Everyone, Zoom and the room, including wishing to do so, will have the opportunity to speak to an article before I recognize anyone wishing to speak for a second time. As moderator, I will recognize registered voters wishing to speak. If there happen to be individuals who wish to speak who are not registered to vote, please indicate that status as a non-voter and allow the assembly to consider affording you the opportunity to speak. For tonight's information meeting, I will read the warnings. We'll work our way through the articles, pausing for questions and comments. Please note that the purpose of this evening is about asking questions necessary for you and others to cast your vote with confidence when you vote tomorrow. The select board will do its best to answer your questions. My duty this evening is to help facilitate that process, making sure everyone has a chance to be heard and have their question answered. Please remember, we gather to share information and ask questions in order to make our best decisions on behalf of our community. This meeting and tomorrow's vote is a community activity, and I urge you to approach each with a communal spirit in mind. And in that communal spirit, let us keep questions and comments focused on the articles and their information and refrain from comments directed towards each other. If you will permit me a slight modification of Shakespeare's words from Taming of the Shrew, let us strive mightily in advocating for ourselves and our beliefs, but after, as neighbors, let us eat and drink as friends. There's more that unites us than can divide us. We'll now stand and recite the pledge of allegiance facing our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now I invite our state representative Chris Pritchard to speak to the assemble.
Excuse me, son of water? Since our state representative does not register to vote in Middletown, should you be asking us if you can? As per the rules that you just laid out.
Mm hmm.
I'll make a motion that Chris Pritchard be allowed to speak to the assemble.
Do you have a second for this motion?
Second, all right, thank you.
Okay, so all those in favor of allowing those posts? Thank you very much, and thank you for that point of order.
Thank you. Thanks for having me and giving me the opportunity to uh to speak to you. I have two other town meetings I have come. The night curve was nice enough to get me on quick and I'm slated to be in Wells at seven fifteen, but um I just kind of wanted to give you an update of of what I was doing, uh, you know, in Montpelier. So I was sworn in on January eighth and I was assigned seat house sixty nine, so that that's the house I occupy in the chamber.
Um. Microphone, please. We don't have a mic.
Okay, I'll 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 speak louder. I'll speak louder.
Thank you.
So we have a large incoming freshman class. I had the opportunity to spend a lot of time with them during the three day orientation and have developed a lot of friendships on both sides of the aisle. We've maintained that. We we stay in touch during the day. Every two weeks we get get out outside the State House and meet together. We'll have pizza and just sit down and talk about the issues and 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 collaborate a little bit together. The uh I got a chance to make my first announcement on the House floor. Robin reached out to me a few weeks ago and let me know that he was going to be at the State House for a realtors meeting. So we hooked up and had a chance to have lunch together and in my committee room. And he asked me if I would announce him on the floor, which I was more than happy to do. I was a little nervous because I had no idea what I was supposed to do, but I think he I think he thought I I did okay. I did okay, so. So I've been appointed to the environment committee. It's chaired by Representative Amy Sheldon from Middlebury. There's eleven members on our committee, six Democrats, four Republicans, and one progressive. I usually start my day at about six thirty in the morning is when I arrive at the State House. It gives me a chance to go to the legislative lounge and get caught up on emails and empty my mailbox. I'm not the first one there. Brian Callmore usually beats me. But it's nice because I, you know, he's been there a while. I can I can talk to him about issues and and things that I don't understand and he can explain it to me, so that's news. Our areas of jurisdiction on environment are we deal with the Clean Water Act. So the phosphorus issues for Lake Champlain and the Lake Memphamagod watershed and the nitrate issues in the Connecticut Valley watershed, Act two fifty issues, Act one eighty one issues. Uh, we do all fish and wildlife issues. We deal with PFOS and PFAS. Um, and we've been dealing lately that's got a lot of discussions, the three acre impervious law. That's in effect, and we've had we've had a considerable amount of discussion on that. There there's concern. I have concerns on the law. I think it's 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 doing a lot of harm to some people. The state has developed a list of three acre impervious sites. There's six hundred and seventy seven people on the list. And essentially, if if they have more than three acres of impervious payment, they need to do a feasibility study. They have to do an engineering study and then they have to conform with whatever the plan is. It's causing some real financial hardships for not just businesses, but individuals. There's a lady in Richmond that testified and it'll it'll cost her to comply and each of the people in her little development, about twenty thousand dollars to meet this. So there's been a lot of unintended consequences, one of them being the Rutland Fair. The Rutland Fair has fallen under this act. They've done their feasibility study. They do not have the money to do the engineering study. It's going to cost them approximately two hundred thousand dollars to complete this. Last year, the legislature approved two million dollars to help four of the fairs, Rutland, Addison, Orleans, I think Tunbridge was the other one. So they allocated two million dollars to help with the plane. The Rutland remediation alone is three point eight million dollars. So there's an institution that's been in the state for a hundred and seventy nine years that is most likely, if it's grandfathered, given the exception, will cease to exist. So we just got to fix that and we're working on that in the committee right now. The first four or five weeks we spent was just training. You know, bringing the committee chair, brought in folks and talked about all these issues. I was not familiar with a lot of them, so it was really to bring new members up to speed and and refresh old members, and it was helpful. You know, but now we're starting to deal with the bills. We have thirty five bills on our wall. We have discussed a couple of them. We have moved nothing out of committee yet, and we have to do so by crossover time, which is vastly approaching on March fourteen. I think that when we get back, we are finishing up on a PFAS PFOS bill, and I think that that will probably be the first thing that we submit. Basically, it's about banning six or seven different items. Textiles that contain PFOS, incontinence and mincule products that contain PFOS. Baby pacifiers, believe it or not, that have PFOS. There's 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 language that we're working on. There's some unintentional consequences language that's in there, and so we're trying to straighten straighten that up so so it works for everybody. But I I think that that's probably going to be the first thing that we send out. I don't know how how many more things will come out of that committee within the time that we have. One of the things I want to talk about real quick, and I'm going to leave leave it here. I left a couple of things for people to look at. One, I've put, I'll leave this. This is all the bills that I have co-sponsored this year, so you can look at them and and see what they are and have if you, you know, you have concerns, reach out to me and we can talk about those things, so. So I will leave that here. The other the other bill that I wanted to talk to is a bill that I sponsored early off and it and was H fifty four. And and Robin was involved in this at the, you know, in the time that he was in the legislature, and it's about banning cell phones in schools. The bill has actually come from a constituent in Middletown Springs who has worked on this diligently for several years. And so it was brought forth. The bill was introduced by Angela Arsenal from Burlington High Co-sponsored on it. It has bipartisan support, quite a few sponsors. Right now, it hangs in the education committee room on the wall. And it sounds as if Peter Conlon, who's the chair, is is going to leave it there. He feels that there's too much going on with the new ed bill and that they won't have time to do anything. So there's been an effort to there's been an effort to reach out to the Speaker of the House, and that's happening, I think, right now. To see if we can relieve the Education Committee of this bill and send it to Digital Infrastructure and Energy, which is chaired by Kathleen James in Manchester. There's there's bipartisan support on her committee to the folks that I have talked to to, you know, to get this off the wall and debate it, and I I think the person that has has worked so hard on this at least deserves that, so. Where it goes, I don't know. I have sponsored one bill, H two fifty two. It's the only bill I drafted and probably will be the only bill I draft certainly in this half of the biennium, and it was on behalf of constituent Timothy that approached me. I was able to go through the process, get a lot of help from a lot of people up there and get the bill drafted. This bill has bipartisan support. I have a third of the House that has signed on to this bill. I put it in early because there's a timeline and I was afraid of missing it. Since then, I have had at least twenty to twenty five members come up to me in in support of this bill. And and I think the majority of the House is 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 beginning receiving this, seeing this bill move. Seven of eleven committee members in the Committee of Jurisdiction has this bill have co-sponsored with me. And and what it really relates to is, in a nutshell, is is it's about earn time served. So there was a law act twelve a couple of years ago that got passed that allowed if you were sentenced to prison, it it may with a few exceptions, it allowed it allowed the the person that was tried and convicted. If he behaved himself or herself for thirty days in prison, they got a reduction of seven days off their sentence. Having the ability to, you know, reduce their sense by twenty five percent. The woman whose husband's life was lost and was taken by this person, this person was a seven-time convicted felon, multiple misdemeanors and 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 she came to me and said, this this just isn't right. I would like, you know, I would like the obvious. Yeah, you know, I I I would ask if you would do this on my behalf, and I have. So whether or not that bill comes off the wall, the committee chair actually helped me with this. She was very, very helpful with this, but she is not fond of this bill. So that's the way things work up there. And clearly, what I have found is controlled by committee chairs, so whether the bill comes off the wall or not really is the sole discretion of public chair. So I I hope it finds its way to debate. If not, the second part of the biennium, I'll 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 try again to push it forward, so. The other thing I've tried to focus on is just of people in the district that have issues. You know, I've had about a dozen people in the towns reach out to me with different concerns. I, you know, I've been able to address a fair amount of them and resolve them.
Chris, we'd really like to hear you.
Okay.
Speak up. We cannot hear.
Okay, sorry. You know, I I
There are some chairs up front.
You know, my my main focus has been to try to help people in district to have issues, and that's what I want to do. I don't, you know, I don't want to get immersed in in what's going on up there. You know, I have a responsibility, but the priority to me is when when somebody reaches out to me, that 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 becomes a priority. So the other thing I've done, tried to do is, and I've set it up with the town clerks. Patty Patty has been very helpful. I've spoken to Gail Fowler and Timothy, Andy Lenhart and Rupert, Deb Hawkins and Paula and Sherry Newton in Wells. And one of the things that I'm trying to set up that I think would be helpful, so I'm trying to get people engaged in the process. I think there's just far too many people that aren't either frustrated what's going on or or just don't don't want to be involved or intimidated by trying to find out. So what I'm trying to set up in each town, I've set it up in Timoth and I was at Timoth's town meeting Saturday and got a pretty good response, so I'm in the process of setting up with Gail is I'd like to do a Vermont offer of Vermont Gov tutorial on the Vermont Gov website, Vermont.gov website. And so basically, what this will let you do is it'll let you go in, you can look up the person who represents you. You can look at their voting record. You can look at the bills they sponsor. You can look at the committees they're on. You can look at the bills their committee has, and you can actually watch testimony that happens. Everything up there is, I'm sure Robin will tell you, is transparent. There's nothing that happens in the committee that is not live, so. You know, and you have you have the ability to do it at your leisure. After dinner, you you don't have to watch what's going up up there when it's happening. After dinner, if you want to sit down and say, hey, what the environmental committee do today, you can look and and see. And if you have a concern with with something, you can reach out to whoever, whatever committee it is. If you're interested in health or education or or whatever, you know, whatever the subject is, everything is there for you to do it. And 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 I think, you know, people get intimidated by the website. It's pretty easy once you figure it out. So I want to share that with people, so they can see bills, they can see, you know, they can see what's going on live, so so you can react to a bill that you may not either, well, that you may support or you may not support before it becomes law, and I think that's important, so. So that's pretty much all I have. I know there's a lot. There's going to be a lot of questions on education, and I don't have any answers for you. Other than I have I have read a little bit of the draft that was released. I have some concerns on it for our district. You know, one of the one of the things that's in that bill is that all education will be done in state, so Rupert and Wells and and Paulette have folks that go to Salem and Granville, and as part of this pet plan, that will be eliminated. So it's a concern. This plan is in its infancy, and there is going to be a lot of changes. This is not going to happen overnight. You know, really what the governor has 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 done is I think he wants to get, you know, get started on it. Nothing has moved in the House. It just started moving in the Senate. Representative Seth Bongard, I'm sorry, Senator Seth Bongarts from Manchester is really the first person to initiate anything. He has redrawn a version of his map. The governor asked for five districts. The one that Senator Bongarts has has put forth shows nine districts with one single independent district throughout the state. So, you know, we'll we'll see what, you know, what happens with that, but this is something that's gonna gonna take some time to evolve, so. Thank you. If anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer them. If not, I'm going to try to head head to Wells. Robin.
Robin Chestnut, Andrew. Thank you, Chris, for being here. Just very quickly, obviously, the education transformation is the the big bill in the House this year. What are the other two priorities in the House or three?
Of of the of the legislature? Well, I think I think, you know, just recently released, the Public Safety Bill has been released, and I think that that's that's something that the governor would like to see move forward. I'm concerned about healthcare and the cost of healthcare, and I'm not sure, you know, I've spoken, the state haven't has an advocate for that. Bill Canfield, Representative Canfield introduced me to him, and we had a good talk. There's a great concern for the cost. You know, I've spoken to Sue Thrasher, who's the head of the Vermont School Boards Association, and they had a legislative breakfast. I didn't, I couldn't stay along and to have a long enough to have breakfast, but she spent about ten minutes with me, you know, going over some stuff. And one one of the things that she pointed out to me is in the year twenty thirty five, it's estimated that healthcare for an individual will be sixty thousand dollars. You know, we have a lot of challenges, so. You know, I I don't I don't know if if anything will be be discussed on that or not, Robin, to be honest with you, but I I think everybody is immersed in this education thing. And 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 everything seems to be going slow, and that's the general consensus. Nothing is coming off the walls. Nobody's taking anything off the walls. So I, you know, I I don't know the reason behind that. You know, we have a lot of good bills that would do a lot of good. So I, you know, I I don't know the reason behind that. You know, we have a lot of good bills that would do a lot of good for people, I think. And um, they just sit there, and I don't know if by the time we get to crossover. If 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 we will have a chance to to move them forward. So um, but yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Yes.
My dad refused to be back in the insurance commission from state. And he wants you to high school. And so I ended up putting the extra, what's in that tablet was. Fifteen years, sixteen years ago. People were saying, yes, we would see on a pair of ones. Yeah, some some ways to be. And we all only went. Lot from the. High school. Wasn't too hard for me to get to high school.
Well, I met a lot of good folks up there. Um, and uh, and everybody is anxious to help. Whether it's a a fellow legislator or or the departments. Um, and uh, you know, I I, you know, I've. I've had to deal with with the. The Attorney General's Office on an issue for constituent and and I've been to, you know, the A and R and the D C and. And uh, and and everybody's helpful. They 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 want to help you. So it's it's good. Um. So thank you. I'm going to try to head to Wells and and I just want to thank you for the opportunity that you've given me to do this with it and. Oh, you know, I'll do the best I can. I want to be fair to everybody. And uh, you know, if you have a concern, bring it to my attention. You know, I I try to be prompt on emails. Um, you know, at the beginning of the session, I got thirty-five fifty a day. Uh, some days I get close to two hundred. Um, I try to read them all and uh. Sometimes I can respond the same day. Sometimes it takes a little longer, but um, you know, I try to respond to everybody. Uh, and and reach out to them. So. Thank you for letting me, letting me speak with you. So I'm I'm going to leave this here for for you to look at. And I'm going to leave um, uh, I'm going to leave a copy of the um, the cell phone bill that you that you could look at. Um, um, you know, if you want to read that and see that, um, it would be good. Um, you know, good first. I would welcome support on moving this forward. I kind of ripped this off, but this, if you're interested in in doing that tutorial, I think Robin has. Has I think Robin might maybe doing one too is what I heard, which is great. And I'm sure he knows the system better than I do, but. I think it's it's just good. It's good for everybody to to get engaged and have the opportunity to be part of these solutions. So, thank you.
Patty, we have a request of the speakers in the room to be asked to go near the microphone. Speak.
Do y'all get that? People can't hear you, so you gotta speak up or come up here near the microphone. So everyone, this is Chris's seat. I'm going to leave it back here for that. The more convenient you decide it, and I'll bring it back to make sure Chris gets it. If you're interested in his.
And Patty, the recording will be available for anyone who's listening on Zoom. To ask.
Still recording.
Yeah, it'll be online tomorrow, according to the state of Vermont's new open meeting law.
So thank you for your patience, those of us who are uh who are joining us on Zoom. Uh, the recording will have uh better pickup, I think, of State Representative Pritchard's comments uh for you to listen to. So if there are no other technical issues for those participating by Zoom which need to be resolved.
Uh, about thirteen people dialed it.
Will now proceed to the consideration of the articles published in the morning. As I said before, I'll read each article and then I'll open the floor for questions and comments. Warning, the town meeting Monday, March third, two thousand twenty-five and Tuesday, March fourth, two thousand twenty-five. The voters of the town of Middletown Springs in the county of Rutland, state of Vermont. Who are legally qualified to vote at a town meeting are hereby warned to meet at the Middletown Springs Elementary School multipurpose room. In said town or by electronic means on Monday, March the third, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M. For the purpose of being provided information and to allow for the discussion of the articles to be voted on Tuesday, March fourth, twenty twenty-five. At the conclusion of this informational meeting, there will be a recess until seven A M. On the following day. March fourth, two thousand twenty-five, at which time business involving voting by Australian ballot. And voting required by law to be by ballot will be transacted at the Middletown Springs Town Office Building at five South Street. Middletown Springs, Vermont. Polls will be open March fourth, twenty twenty-five from seven A M. Until seven P M. Article one, to elect town officers as provided by Vermont law. The floor is now open for any discussion or questions regarding these elections. There are no questions or objections. We'll move on to article two. Shall the voters of the town of Middletown Springs accept the report prepared by the town auditors? Yes. Uh, please state your name so that people on Zoom will know.
I'm Juanita Birch Clay, and I am a town auditor. And I I always like to say a few words about our report.
Nita, can you just come?
Yeah, if you could come closer to the mic, that would probably help.
You're hard to hear.
Wait, this is the mic?
Yeah, that's the mic.
Okay, so I'm Juanita Birch Clay. I'm one of the town auditors. Um, the other one is Tracy Weatherhog. Um, uh, you of course can read our report. I uh hope that you will read the report. I just want to emphasize a couple of things. Uh, we, I would like to emphasize the solid work done by our town officials, uh particularly the treasurer and the town clerk. I would like to uh point out that we're very happy with the um, the progress. That that has happened over the years, especially with the select board. Our our financial standing has improved our policies, our our procedures. And as auditors, our job has gotten easier over the past um five to ten years because our town has kind of. Got its act together financially in terms of what we call internal controls. Um, I'd also like to to mention that our town trust funds are doing very well. Uh, again. Over the past few years, there've been some trustees who have put a lot of energy into uh updating our investments. We have oh over a million dollars in trust funds in the town, and they're. Funds that were, some of them were started a hundred years ago to support the cemetery or the church or the farmers. Um, the library, and you can read all the reports in here. But uh, it's a sort of a thankless job to to monitor that, and we have some trustees now that are doing just that. And I'd like to acknowledge that work has been slow and but steady. And again. Um, they're taking good care of our money, and that money is coming back to the town.
Hey, Juanita, while you're there, let me just stand and and do a little a little town meeting announcement. So I'm John Weatherhog. I'm one of those.
Uh, or trustees.
Uh, and Steve Harrington is another one of those back there. So tomorrow, when you're in the ballot and you're wondering, who the heck do I write in? Well, for public money, you would write in Steve Harrington unless you have somebody better, but the the we just hold the pot for it. Yeah. And uh, Copeland, the Copeland Cemetery Fund, you would write mine even the hypothesis of John. So. Thanks for that.
Well done.
And a little opportunity.
Awesome. Um, uh, so now on on some of our frustrations. Uh, we do get tired of making some of the same recommendations every year. So do take a look at where we talk about our suggestions. And it would be nice to kind of check out a few um, a few more uh bits of policies and procedures. Um. Uh, I appreciate that the the select board report al- also as well as ours says it's time for another external audit. We had, we were last audited by professional auditors uh for fiscal year eighteen. And um although it's quite expensive, it's one of those things we need to keep doing because I think it helps make us look. Good for all these grants that we get. Um, our focus this coming year will be uh the the library project. Every year we try and focus a little bit on on one thing or another. We'll be looking at that closely. Uh, we all want that library project to go smoothly. Um, and I would like to put out a call for a third auditor. In Vermont, we're supposed to have three town auditors. We are civilian auditors. We're not experts. Um, but we keep an eye on what's happening financially. Uh, it only takes a couple hours a month. We're a nice group, the two of us at the moment. And if you'd like to know. What's going on in the town, uh but you don't have a lot of time and you and you don't mind working with numbers. Um, please, let me know or let Patty know. Let the select board know. We would love to spend some time with you. And um last of all, please send us questions. If you have questions ever about anything happening in the in the town, anything. Happening with purchases or our money of any sort, um. Send us a message because that gives us a a little project to work on. We love finding out. We love. The mystery of things and figuring it out, and we will actually answer your questions. So that's it for me.
Thank you.
No questions as of yet.
If there are no further questions or comments on this article and no objection. We'll proceed to article three. Article three. Shall the voters of the town of Middletown Springs appropriate four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars? For the general operation of the town, the sum of three hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars to be raised by taxes. On the twenty twenty-five grand list of the town of Middletown Springs for the fiscal year of July first. Twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. The floor is now open for questions or comments regarding this art.
Yes, um, Patty Kenyon, Select Board. I just want to let everyone know um that. Last year at town meeting, we voted in advisory article to bundle the uh appropriations, the the uh. Nonprofit fund ask that we get every year into the general budget. So this year, you'll see we have twelve articles. Last year, we had thirty-seven. So that's the result of that. So there were, so if you look at our budget, you'll see them still all listed. And we used to go through those at the end of the meeting and say if anybody had questions or things to say about them. What I'm telling you is now is the time. We won't do that at the end of the meeting because everything's in the general budget. So if there's anything on those appropriations. That you have questions about, now's the time to ask those questions. And that also will. Is partly why you see the town budget a little more expensive. Than last year. We always vote on it. It doesn't show up in the ask. Because of you, you all give permission, and at the end it comes out, it comes out of that pot, but it's not shown in our budget. It wasn't in previous years. And and if you look at the budget, you will see that as well. You you can deduce that. The numbers are all there. But I just wanted everyone to know that that's a a big change in how things are um formatted, not necessarily. How things are dealt with, because all of those appropriations have been. Approved year after year after year after year. And own, there are a few appropriations still on this ballot. It's because they they're. They either asked for more money than they had asked for last year. They were not approved last year, or they didn't ask for any money last year. So. That is, it's the other piece of that is that I left out is. Part of our new policy, we created a new policy that part of that new policy is any ask that's over five thousand dollars. Automatically goes on the budget. So that's why you will see the fire department on there and also the poty rescue because it. Uh, as separate articles on the ballot because they asked for more than five thousand dollars. So that's, that's just a short, semi-short explanation of that.
Okay. Carrie Redfield, Select Board. Um, as Patty said. Um, we bundled several of these items together. Patty was the brainchild forced behind this word. She did the research on this. And just F Y for everybody's information, by bundling them together. That saves, I think it was thirteen hundred dollars in programming costs for the for the tabulator and. Just one page or one smaller eight half by eleven uh sheet of paper instead of. Multiple pages and oversight pages. So we should thank Patty for looking on to.
Yes, please.
Carrie Tworne, eight, Town Springs. Just wanted to ask the select boards, what's the child care? Uh, fine, I get it. It's four hundred and fifty dollars. I don't, I don't know what that is.
I can answer that. Jenny Calhoun, I'm a town treasurer. It's a uh. And in addition to the taxes that the state of Vermont implemented on July first. To take out, um, the choice was to charge the town that percentage for to have the. Employee pay cap to the town pay cap. The select board voted um that the town could pay for it because it's a percentage. Point zero four four, really small. So it's it's a judge, and Robin, maybe you can help me with this, what the child care credit is for exactly. Um.
Robin Chestnut Tangeren, uh, several years ago, the legislature voted to try to make childcare more accessible. To people and affordable. And so that money goes towards subsidizing childcare. People. It it's a statewide plot.
So it's it's a, it's a payroll tax, and it's probably being figured thirteen hundred dollars per year. Um, who's that four fifty years' name is probably for the town will be another amount in sideways. So we had no choice. The only choice was this, does the town pay for it in total? Or does it get split to the workplace?
Thank you. And I'll just remind you that we are trying to help out our community members on Zoom, and the microphone is all the way up here. So. As best you can be as loud as you as possible for those individuals.
James Moran. Quick question. So if I understand correctly. Provided the increases less than five thousand dollars for whatever it happens to be in your appropriation to L. And it doesn't come back to vote?
Correct. So if if.
So each each line item that's on on the ballot. Could rise up. For four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine and and not come back to vote.
No, no, no. If it changes at all. So you'll see article number um nine is the Vermont Rural Fire. Fire Department, they ask for an appropriation every year. They usually ask for a hundred dollars. This year, they asked it for two hundred dollars. So that goes on as this on a specific ballot item because it is an increase. If there's an increase, it goes on as a ballot item.
Okay.
If it's the same amount that they asked for the previous year or the previous time that it was approved by the voters. It it would just gets rolled into the budget.
Okay, and. Let's say something changes in the town view on whatever that line I've missed. How do we raise that and remove it from the general poll?
Well, you should re- raise it here at town meeting, or you could vote the budget down.
Okay.
You could also place a petition on the ballot saying that we would like this to be individually approved. You could, you could petition for that, bring that to the town office. Um, the other, the other thing, and Patty mentioned this a minute ago, but it's important to mention that if something is voted down. And comes back to us, it automatically goes on the ballot. So last year, the voters did not approve the expenditure for the Rutland Regional Planning uh or the Rutland Regional Marketing Initiative. They have come back to us with the same request, same dollar amount. But because it was not approved last year, it is automatically added as an individual line item to be voted. So there are a number of checks along the way. Um, you know, the things that are in bundled into the town budget now are things that have been repeated at the same budget level. For years and years and years. And usually by sixty-five or seventy percent margin.
Yeah, I Neil Russell, uh, I guess the same thing applies with the law enforcement there for twenty-five thousand that got rolled into the general. Um, that was always. super close. And guys, uh, having plans of continue with this practice of keeping it in or for taking, taking it out as it all adds up?
Every, every year, we, we did it, we could rolled it into our budget last year. And every year we discuss it, um, it just, you know, we decided that it all regardless of how close it is, it's not ever failed. So we took the message from the voters that they wanted law enforcement included. They wanted to pay for law, law enforcement. So we put it in the budget. Just, you know, it's a matter of administration, right? In my view. And uh it's the same thing. If, if people are, are wanting to see it on the ballot, again, bring it up to the, you know, bring it up to the Select Board and I'm sure they would be open to it, but the last couple of years, it's been included in as a line item and as a, just an item in the budget.
Uh, in two thousand twenty-four, was it uh, it was like fourteen thousand something? What was the reason why this such a low amount spent that year?
We get billed by the hour, so they didn't spend as many hours here. Why? We don't really know. I mean, it's all about, they bill us by the hour. So we never really know. We, but we, we used to uh, estimate that it was a twenty hours and that always brought us to that large amount. Um, but you know, that's that just completely depends on whether or not they come in and they are here that many hours.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's actually supposed to be ten.
Ten hours a week.
Ten hours per week, but they, they've had the same stacking issues as virtually everybody else today. So it's just, but we, we haven't gotten that covered, that full coverage. Thanks.
Are there any additional comments or questions regarding this article? Yes.
Dan Query, Twitter, Middletown Springs. I have a question. A line item for property maintenance, town-owned property maintenance. And then there's a line item for the old cemetery. Does the maintenance of the cemetery fall under the town property maintenance? And then this, the other money is for repair headstones and things, or is the maintenance done out of the old cemetery? Line item. And I have a follow-up question when I get your answer.
Everything that we do in the cemetery comes out of the cemetery. That is separate bunch. The other property maintenance is uh, the maintenance around the town office. West Street, okay, yeah, brush hogging West Street, all those kinds of things.
Okay, um. First off, I want to start by thanking the town for our new town office. It's great. Our town four corners is hugely improved. Thank you. Tasking all of you when you're heading west out of town, look at the cemetery. Look up at the trees and what Green Mountain Power has done to them. All of those cedar trees, they've all been cut in half. They haven't been maintained since they were planted. And it looks like we're ashamed of this cemetery and we're trying to hide it now. Green Mountain Power comes through and puts three base power into our town. From Pulteney, we got power coming in from West Rutland. And there's lines going to every direction at the intersection. I think, I'm embarrassed now. We're trying to make our town center look better. And we're accepting this as voters.
So what's your opinion as to how to fix that?
Please stand up and say your name there.
James Moran, Town.
Okay, geez. First, I think we need to go to Green Mountain Power. They butchered them.
Not gonna happen. Ten foot away from the lines, they will, they will absolutely clear cut.
Perfect. That's, that's what we need to do. We need to cut them down. Okay, start back over, plant privates or boxwoods to make a little hedge like the initial intention of what those cedar trees were planted for.
Rhododendrons.
Perfect. I'm good with that. But we need to do something. And there is no, from what I've been told, there's no committee that manages the cemetery. It's our Select Board. There's nobody in the town that's responsible for town-owned trees. We have no tree commissioner. We as voters of this town need to do something. Just take a look next time watch. Don't take my word for it. Look up as you're heading west.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any additional comments or questions regarding this article? Yes.
I just want to address something that Mr. Queer just said. My name is John Matheson, Middletown Springs. In the eighteen sixties, bear with me, okay, quick, um, the old cemetery was expanded westward slightly. This is before Pleasant View Cemetery went, went in. Um, and the person who sold the new land to the cemetery, um, stipulated um, two things. First, that there be a plot for a feminist family. And also that there be a hedgerow planted along West Street, along the cemetery. Which it's been there obviously overgrown since then. But it's, the trees that are there are against the original intent of sale. And yeah, this is, you know, a hundred and fifty years ago. But I wonder if we're still bound by that, um, sales degree. Just putting that out there.
John, while our current, uh, fee for the Copeland Cemetery Fund can tell you that there's plenty of money oozing out of this fund to uh, to help pay for something like uh, a new hedgerow of whatever you want, or a lightyear uh, whatnot. So uh, I will take that back to the, to the trustees, assuming you vote me in tomorrow. Uh, and if you don't, so thanks, Paul, right? But I'll uh, I'll see if we can't throw some money at the uh, problem and uh, I'll take care of it. So hopefully problem solved.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? All right. If there's no objection, we'll proceed to the next article. Article Four. Shall the voters of the town of Middletown Springs appropriate five hundred twenty-eight thousand and fifty-five dollars for the care and maintenance of highways, the sum of four hundred twenty-six thousand and fifty-five dollars to be raised by taxes on the twenty-twenty-five grand list of the town of Middletown Springs for the fiscal year of July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. The floor is now open for discussion and questions regarding this article. Yes.
Yeah, Neil Russell, uh, are we still maintaining the mile of one forty past our town line going into Pulteney? Um, down line, I mean, roughly seems old garage, now Jay Carter's.
I don't know of anything that's changed. Is, is Bill here? No.
Yeah, we have, we have a set agreement with uh, oh, it's not a contract, but with the town of Pulteney, because that's such a hazardous area down through there. It's a cold spot. Um, whoever gets to that section of road first between Middletown and Pulteney maintains it. So every storm is different. Um, we also, I think we're getting a better deal because Pulteney maintains the McIntyre Road. Uh, the little section that Middletown owns, and we don't have to touch that. They maintain that in part of the trade for um, us helping L. We're just, it's a, it's a joint effort to maintain a very hazardous section of road. And that's why it's happening. A little bit of common sense here is what it amounts to.
Additional questions or comment?
Uh, I've got a question, sorry. Uh, still John weather all over here in the corner. Um, Jenny, Jenny Monia, do we know what the, what the dollar figure is increased or decreased from last year to this year relative to the two articles we're voting on or whatever else is, in terms of the, in terms of the town costs?
On highway now? Right?
Correct. Article Four.
So it's pretty flat.
The highway was pretty flat. The um, I have the figures on my computer down there, which is running the meeting and Zoom and all those things, so I can't get them for you.
Ballpark, I mean.
They're, like I said, pretty flat. The, 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 the town general government is up because we put in some, um, we put the appropriate, the appropriations in there. And you've.
So we're, we're to page that, yeah.
So yeah, with the, with the um, with the appropriations, this year, the last year in there, it's, it's, it's flat. It's like down five point five percent. But if you add um, the other appropriations in and they get passed, um, the, the expenses will be up two percent. But we have revenue that's up four percent. So that's going to bring everything back down again. There was really, yeah, really no minimal increase.
Yes.
Neil Russell again, uh, does the town highway department have a working time clock?
No.
How do we keep track, accurate track of hours?
We keep track by time sheets.
With no clock to punch in, punch out.
No.
Any additional questions or comments regarding this article? If there's no objection, then we'll proceed to Article Five. Article Five, shall the voters of the town of Middletown Springs authorize the Select Board to fund the municipal tax stabilization reserve fund with any surplus up to five thousand dollars from the current fiscal general fund budget to be used to reduce unanticipated tax increases due to the general fund cost overruns? The floor is now open for discussion, questions, comments regarding Article Five.
I think from Zoom land, yeah.
Seeing no hands for questions or comments, there's no objection, we'll proceed to Article Six. Article Six, shall the voters of the town of Middletown Springs authorize the Select Board to fund the reserve fund for town municipal facilities with up to fifty thousand dollars of any non-allocated general fund surplus from the current fiscal year and further allocate any surplus still remaining to be used to reduce taxes. The floor is now open for questions, comments, and discussions on Article Six.
No comments.
Yes.
Gabby Hayward, Middletown Springs.
Make sure they can hear you, please.
Oh, Gabby Hayward, Middletown Springs. Um, I'm just wondering if you could tell us a little bit more about this because um, I'd like to know a little bit more about the, the where that money will go, how it will be shared across the town. Um, if there's extra, where that money will go.
So, so for the past, what, uh, seven or eight years, we've had a, a valid item on the, um, maybe ten years on, on the ballot for this purpose. And this was, this became through surpluses over the years, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar funds that we use to help build the town office. We still have a town garage to build. We still have a transfer station to move. Um, so there's still a lot of facilities to work with. So that's how the fund is used. If there is, there are some, um, there are some funds still in the town office reserve, but there's also another pot of money for, that is called uh, that, that comes from surplus alone. Um, and that is what it, that is what it's geared towards, helping us take, uh, you know, uh, address some of these issues that we wouldn't be able to otherwise. So instead of giving you, you know, we have all this money, we have all this money. We got all these tax dollars and we didn't spend them all. So instead of giving them back to you with, by giving you a penny of reduction in your tax rate, we keep it so that we can address an issue later on. That's what it's basically for. Um, and it's, it's worked. Right now, we have reduced, we, we, but we've said only up to fifty thousand because we had a year where we had, right after COVID, we had, um, the state of Vermont came in and they offered to pay, help people pay their back taxes. So a lot of people came late on their taxes during COVID. We didn't budget for that. So we had a huge influx of, of money. So we ended up with a hundred and twenty thousand dollars surplus at the end of one year. Which didn't feel right because we had to buy our, buy our article, we had to put it all in that reserve. We couldn't give any back to the town. So now this article is designed where we put fifty thousand dollars away and anything over that will go back and reduce taxes. Hopefully that makes sense.
And that was Patty speaking.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Uh, Carol Haines, on page twenty-six of your town report, you'll see all those reserve funds item arms. So this line item itself right now, as of the first of July, has two hundred and forty thousand in that line item. All right. So it had been drawn for years.
Yeah, Terry Rogers, Select Board, and Patty's better than I, um, and she, I believe was the brainchild behind getting the, this process uh, through. Um, but the theory behind it, correct me if I'm wrong, but the main theory behind it was historically, a lot of town budgets in state of Vermont, what now, like a yo-yo all the years. You know, one year they're way high and you have a good year, the next three is big reductions. So the point was to try to stabilize the tax or keep it as flat as even as possible. Great idea, yeah.
Yeah, you know, if, if you might, you might imagine that when you have, your taxes go up a little bit one year and the next year they go way down. No one remembers they went way down. The next year when they go back up to normal, they do remember that. So that was, that was our yo-yo. We had that yo-yo thing going on. We, we wanted to just even it out and and so if we, we collected those taxes, we have plenty of things that need addressing. And, and at the same time, we had projects that we were trying to do and they weren't, they got voted down because we, people thought we couldn't afford it. So we're trying to be able to afford things that we need and um, responsibly. That's how I would best.
For children's Select Board, um, one of the things you'll see in the next year and a half is that this savings account is going to be enormously handy. Because as of the end of twenty twenty-six, we will no longer be able to occupy the current town garage. The historical society has bought that building in order to be able to display historic farm equipment, which is a wonderful thing. It's right across the street from the existing historical society, like great addition to their program. But that leaves us with a building which is no longer available to us and which frankly has been insufficient for thirty-five years. Right? So we will now be looking to construct a new town garage. And this will help to reduce the amount of borrowing we might have to do. It will help to reduce the burdens that we place on uh, the voters as a kind of one-time expenditure. So these, these savings accounts do periodically uh, come to enormous benefit for us.
Any additional comments or questions on this article? If there are no objections and I'm remembering where I am in my program here, we'll proceed to Article Seven. Article Seven, shall the town of Middletown Springs deem necessary and appropriate eighty-six thousand dollars for the Middletown Springs Volunteer Fire Department, determining that the program serves the residents of the town with fire protection and emergency response services? The floor is now open for questions, comments, and discussions of this article.
Robin Cheska Tangierman, is there somebody from the fire department who could speak to this? Oh, thanks, Jeffrey. Um, looking at page forty-six, there's approximately forty-three thousand dollars of grant money coming in. And I mean, forty-eight thousand grant money spent. Was that the new poses for all the equipment?
Uh, no, it was your castle, Middletown Springs, Sparty. Um, so no, we actually had Uh, no, it was your castle, Middletown Springs, Sparty, um so no, we actually had. Two grants ongoing at this time, what you see in this budget was the. Compressor and fill station for our air tanks.
Okay.
So the the difference in the numbers is it's a it's a matching grant, so there was. Here shy of forty three thousand that came in, that was the government's part, um our match was five percent of the total cost, which got us to the forty seven nine. Uh, the total cost, the homeless grant, we actually just took delivery.
Yeah.
Either of those two weeks ago, so this will be, it's in the next, the next two months, okay.
Thank you for that.
And it, yes.
Dan Querry, Stella Woller, Middletown Springs. Neil, I'm gonna take this opportunity. For the last two years. I fought uh an issue on my property. And help from this state. And because we don't get to vote on it. The sheriffs did absolutely nothing for me on that piece of property. The one people I have to thank. From the bottom of my heart. Is the Middletown Springs Fire Department. They came out, they were professional. They stayed there till it was done, but unfortunately. I lost my parents' house that they lived in. When they lived here with me. Because of the sheriff's department. I don't get to vote on them this year. But we couldn't spend enough money for the volunteer fire department as far as I'm concerned. I went through twenty two people at this state. About every state agency you can imagine, child protective services. To the fire marshal, to the sheriffs, the state police, to the courts. And nobody helped me. Unfortunately, got to a point that house burned down. The Middletown Springs Volunteer Fire Department did an unbelievable job. I can't thank you enough.
Any other comments or questions regarding this article? Alright, there's no objections, we'll proceed to the next article, article eight. Shall the voters of the town of Middletown Springs deem necessary and appropriate thirty nine thousand seven hundred dollars? For the support of the Pulteney Rescue Squad, determining that program. The program serves the residents of the town with emergency life support and transport services. The floor is now open for questions, comments, and discussions of this article.
Neil Russell, uh. About five years ago, I remember it was right around probably seven thousand and change. So this is. Roughly a six hole increase, five years. What exactly do we get? For the thirty nine thousand dollars?
Perp Childress Select Board, uh I'll be more specific than that, two years ago, the request was twelve thousand dollars. Last year was thirty one thousand dollars. Um, we did not receive uh a lot of information about that, we put it on the ballot because it was a request, we did not receive a lot of information about it. And a member of the, or representative of the rescue squad was not present to talk us through it at town meeting. Um, that request has gone from thirty one to thirty nine this year. Uh, they have not provided his financial statement and a representative of the group, I shouldn't say that, I don't know, is there a representative of the? Pulteney Rescue Squad with us, see me? So we don't know, is the answer.
And and just. To uh to add to her comment. The last year's request, when it went from twelve thousand to thirty one thousand and change, the accompanying letter was. A small increase. What is what it is, we don't, we don't have any more information about that. I have, I have inquired that, probably at the twenty six. Twenty county around it. We have a lady, thank you. Hope this is quite a year. I don't believe it give you, I don't believe you get any kind of break or anything, if you if you call the ambulance, they come, doesn't give the resident break on the on, they're still gonna. Them or they or their insurance will still get the same. The price is still saying it's it's. It's uh. If if a town does. Uh, provide funding. I think they still have to come. I don't. They need no, no. You may have to look.
Joe Castle, what? So the EMS districts are set up by the state of Vermont, so only being the closest agency, this along with the portion of town. Is they are designated areas, they will be dispatched whether they come or not, that's up to their members.
From there it goes mutually, if they can't respond.
Right.
And that's why you will see, I mean, you know, we've had. Bramble come or Fairhaven come or. Other agencies.
Right, we don't, we don't pay them, they're hits or.
No, I mean, we have, we we have, we are asked every year, Rutland Regional asked for. Five hundred dollars or three hundred dollars, there ambulance service, but this is a. You know. A different thing, I maybe Carl, Carl has a lot of history, so he may be able to explain it.
Cool.
This number, what I understand is they raise their town allotments to fifty dollars. Per capita. This year. Um, a lot of services are just raising it. To the communities. Trying to raise funds, a lot of services are just plain struggling. Lack of volunteers, lack of paid people. And they're not, you know, services aren't gonna last much longer, a lot of these volunteer services, they just can't afford it. Back in eighty, when I started in Pulteney, the budget. For the first year I was a member over there was seven thousand dollars to operate that volunteer service. Now it's well over two hundred, two two hundred and fifty thousand to operate annually now. Um. And then on the. And so that's what I understand that is, the part of regional ambulants, that four dollars. No, fifty, I do believe it's fifty cents.
Yeah.
Per capita. Is to support medic one. The paramedic service. Out of regional, that's the portion that all the communities in Rutland County. At least charge fifty cents per person. Um, to my knowledge, regional ambulants. Still charging their their member communities five dollars per person. Um, but these small services, they're just struggling. Last time I talked to the manager, Jim Finger at Regional, you know, he's. Told me these services need to up their insurance. What they're charging insurance companies. And not be going after the back page. But they're doing everything they can, just try to survive and. Well, it has just gotten too expensive all the way around.
Yeah, uh Laura Rubenstein, Middletown Springs. Um, uh, we talked about this, Neil talked about this with respect to the police coverage, I have the same question with respect to the rescue squad. How much have they been able to give this community? I have heard. Many reports of people who have said. Nobody ever showed up from the rescue squad, or they showed up so late that it was no longer helpful for them to be there. If they're not providing us with the quality of service that we as a community need. That's also part of the equation, and I'm disturbed that nobody from the rescue squad is here to say, here's what we're providing, this is the number of. People we have uh covered, these are the not, these are the issues that we have with our. Um, grants and our funding, we have no idea. And we're being asked to cover something at a significant amount of money, with absolutely no feedback as to what they're doing within this community.
Uh, over here first and then I get to you.
Jenny Talkevania, um if we look at their written report on page forty seven, it said that they did thirty two calls in Middletown Springs last year. So I think Carly mentioned they're asking for fifty dollars per call or per person.
And he mentioned five hundred.
No, it's fifty, fifty.
So that's how it works out, the math don't work out that way.
So just a fun fact, thirty two calls times fifty dollars is sixteen hundred dollars for our town. And last year we paid thirty one thousand dollars, so that's just one thing to think about, the other thing, um and I saw a couple of frontcourt forum uh posts about this. I would request, and you don't have to approve this or not right now, that the select board. Uh, for future, when they get a request to be on the um warning. That not only. Do they get to be on the warning if they're five thousand dollars or war, but they should provide us, they must provide us with financials before they get to go on the warning, because. Fifty dollars a person, okay, but what are, what are your, I I see what you do on your written report, but where does the money get spent, what are we paying for, and. Any person, not just town treasurer, would say to themselves, why am I paying for something when I don't know what it's for?
Do you hold on a second, I, this says the screen may go dark in thirty seconds, thank you.
That's what happened last time. Thank you.
You wanna?
I'm, I'm okay, cause those people were, any covered what I was gonna say.
Wonderful, thank you. Yes.
I would just like to add. That. They also send everyone. A solicitation for a subscription, a personal subscription per household, so they're also asking for fifty dollars a person. From the town, the taxpayers, and then when they will, they, you will see it in your mailbox that they want fifty, another fifty dollars from you. Over and above that first fifty dollars every year.
Just to uh John with her hug, uh corner guy, just to um, just to get some perspective back to math, so fifty dollars divided by three hundred and sixty five days, here is thirteen and a half cents a day. For the, for the coverage that. You hope will show up at your door when you need it, it's a. To me, it's a small price, you know, as as divided by the the per capita uh uh value of of our community. To pay for, for volunteers to come and and really do what they can do to to help save us, cause if. God forbid, any one of us needs that, it it will be a lot, worth a lot more to that person in that moment. You know, we're not gonna say, gosh, you know, your your portion of this thirty nine thousand dollars, hundred dollars, and since it's only been, you're the fifth guy in, so you you know, it's gonna cost you X amount of dollars, but. You know, I think dividing it out, you know, for all of us is is pretty easy math when you do it, when you divide it by, you know, three, three hundred and sixty five days.
Yes.
Hi, uh Crystal Hire, I don't know, I'll have them up here.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
I I just, I would just say also that anybody who um. Has an older person who has a slips, you know, I fell and I can't get up. If if the first people on the list don't respond, this, the rest of the squad is who comes. And so I would support them, because if that doesn't happen, then who knows what will.
Kevin Eaton, West Street, just to add on to John's comments. A basic call to bring you into the hospital by ambulance. When I left Pulteney Rescue three years ago. Just to bring you there, no medications, no oxygen, no bandages, just to take you there, minimum is four hundred and fifty dollars. So, again, to your point, fifty dollars, I think, is. To bring somebody in, if they do show up at your house. Is peanuts.
Well, wait a minute, you still get billed.
If you're a subscriber. You only get billed for what your insurance company does not cover.
Okay. But that's, that's if you're a subscriber, it's not if we vote that thirty thousand dollars.
Right.
So these are two different things.
Yeah, they're still covering, that's a bill, and it's covering, it's probably a thousand bucks now, or one back, you know, I mean, thirty thousand, a thousand bucks of lack is thirty two grand. You know. Uh, if they're gonna bill you or your insurance or whatever anyways, that's not, that wouldn't be covered in the thirty nine thousand.
And Andrew?
Yes, sir.
Terry Ruffin, um. I I've had the, not the pleasure, but uh with family members the last year. Um, I've had occasion with the rescue squad on two different, excuse me, on two different occasions, we moved lots of rescue squad. And I was dismayed as anybody with you. With the increases in the, in the cost, but I have to say that they were fantastic, so.
Fantastic.
They were great.
He doesn't have, yeah, if they show up, they're great.
It goes back to man child. Thing on Zoom, so.
Any additional comments or questions regarding this article? Uh, if there's no objection, then we'll proceed to the next article, article nine. Shall the voters of the town of Middletown Springs deem necessary and appropriate two hundred dollars for the support of Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force? Determining that the program serves the residents of the town with road and fire protection grant programs, including the Better Back Roads Grants and Dry Hydrant Grants. The floor is now open for questions, comments, discussions on this article.
Neil Castle, Fire Department, um, just sort of really understand your business, this is, uh, in fact, I just got the card in the mail uh last week. Um, this is where the fire department will apply for dry hydrants or even wet hydrants for rural fire protection. So in the grand scheme of things, if we spend two hundred bucks, um, your average grant is. And um, that's a. Pretty worthwhile expenditure, a couple of hundred bucks.
Thanks.
Um, I just would, Patty, Kenyon, I just want to say that. The reason this is on the ballot is because last year they asked us for a hundred dollars, this year they're asking for two hundred dollars. There, that, that's it, it's just an increase in an ask.
Dan Querry, have we ever received a grant from them?
Um, every one of the hydrants that we had in town, I think we now have. On that, twelve or thirteen, um, we're all paid for with this grant, thank you.
Any additional comments or questions regarding this article? If there's no objections, we'll proceed to the next article, article ten. Shall the voters of the town of Middletown Springs deem necessary and appropriate seven hundred and forty five dollars for the support of the regional marketing initiative? A collaboration of the Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Region and municipalities around Rutland County. The goal of which is to grow the economy in our region. And determining that the program serves the residents of the town in a regionally funded marketing effort to support the towns and the regions' economy. This article is now open, the floor is now open for discussion. Any questions or comments? Good.
Hi Patty Kane, I'm just. Just as a point of information, this is, this article was voted. Down last year, they asked for eight hundred dollars last year, they're asking for seven forty five this year. Um, it's. Been close each year, but this is a program that is countywide, it is your um. They visit. Every year they visit each town, they they're trying to promote. People to move to Vermont and take on some tech tech jobs or start small businesses. Those kinds of things, so. It it is one that was voted down last year is basically the point of information.
Any questions or comments regarding this article? If there are no objections, then we'll proceed to the next article, article eleven. Shall the voters of the town of Middletown Springs deem necessary and appropriate two hundred dollars for the support of Mentor Connector? Determining that it enhances self-esteem and in-depth training. The floor is now open for questions, comments, or discussion on this one.
Patty Kenyon again, I just a point, another point of information, this, this article somehow did not, they did not ask for their appropriation last year. So it wasn't on the ballot last year, so this year when they came back and asked. After taking a year off, they're now on the article, but in the past, this has been approved. For the. Past, Fred Bradley was the first person, I think, to bring it here, I think so, for the first, last. You know, ten years probably, it's. Or more, it's been approved, it's just that this year, they asked for the exact same amount they asked for the last time they asked. Um. But it, it just didn't ever, they didn't ask last year whether it was a transition of um. Directors or something like that, and they didn't know the. The scope of, you know, how they. How things work, that they go out and they they get on these ballots, or. Anyway, that's, that's my story.
Yeah.
Cool.
And it's interesting because questions eight, nine, ten, and eleven are basically.
And it's interesting because questions eight, nine, ten, and eleven are basically the entire policy. Question eight is more than five thousand dollars, it's on the ballot. Question nine is an increase, it's on the ballot. Question ten is something that failed in the past, it's on the ballot. Question eleven is something that skipped a year, didn't have a request last year, it's on the ballot. That's why things appear as individual valid items. It's a really kind of nice civics lesson in four words, right?
Yes.
New question, so I get my turn.
Yeah.
Um, I can find no information on Mentor Connector. Uh, has anybody in our town received uh, their services?
On page fifty-nine.
Has anybody in our town researched, received any of their services? Was my question, I didn't see that answer. Yes.
Um, I could speak to Mentor Connector a little bit. I am a licensed health, health counselor, and I worked in Rutland for the past eight years. Um, while also living here in Middletown Springs. Mentor Connector is hugely important in the community that surrounds us because um, also, if I sound a little nervous, just hug and speak. So Mentor Connector is great. They, they help kids who maybe don't have a a parent, um, who can take them out and do things with them, or maybe their parents are really struggling. Um, this program is great for kids who really need that extra attention in their lives. They bring them out into the community and do some things with them. Um, so some of the money might use for that. Um, to bring the kids out into the community to do something with them, or to just spend time with them. And these are volunteers, I think this work, and they are, everybody that applies goes through this really big process, um. They're really special people who are chosen, uh, to be working with these kids. I fully support this, this program.
My, my, my question is, anybody from Middletown, receive services from Mentor Connector?
I don't think that, it's not listed here that they served anyone in Middletown this past year, but I know they have served kids from Middletown in the past.
Thank you.
And that information is also confidential.
Yeah, a lot of times they'll just say, we've served one kid, one family in Middletown Springs, or two families, maybe they haven't this year, and I think that's all volunteer. Uh, dependent, right? Whether they, how far out they can, they can reach, depending on what, you know, how many volunteers they have, and if they have people to cover certain areas. But we have had kids and adults in this program, either being mentors or mentees in the past.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? If there's no objection, then we'll move to our last article, Article twelve, which is to transact any other business proper to be before said meeting. And I know there's a few things.
Our town clerk, Patty Kenyon here is, I've served for her, I believe, for the last nine years on the select board. And, uh, as I mentioned earlier, Patty has had a couple substantial initiatives that have saved this town quite a bit of money. She's had great foresight looking for the future establishment, some of these funds. I can safely say that the select board, whoever the future select board is, is going to miss her greatly. She's always done way more than her fair share of work. And, uh, all of you townsfolk are gonna miss it also. She's still the town clerk, but you're gonna miss her talents and her help and her work on the select board. Thank you, Patty.
Any additional business?
I'll add one thing. Carl earlier said that there are a lot of primarily volunteer services that are increasingly difficult to sustain. That includes town government. We have forty elected positions in town. We have another twenty or so appointed positions in town. Many of them go begging, many of them are simply adopted by people who are already doing something else. Um, there are any number of ways to do the necessary work that Vermont places in the hands of each of its two hundred and fifty small communities. So as you see, um, one of the first things that will happen after tomorrow's election is the select board will convene on Thursday uh, to do what's called reorganization meeting to elect new officers. And part of that meeting is to try to fill the positions that are not currently filled. Nobody ran for an office, somebody has stepped down, uh, and it's always a struggle. One of the things Patty did in the last year is to start every single select board meeting with a rundown of the prop, the offices that were not currently occupied. Some of them quote unquote trivial, some of them really important. So I will ask everyone in the room to consider ways in which your particular talents might fit the needs of the town. It's really important, and a lot of work falls to a relatively few people, like Patty.
Yes.
Will Reed, longtime, uh, road crew member, uh, many years as a road foreman. Elected road commissioner for twenty-four years. Um, I feel that I would like to just give a little clarity, we have a five-member board, we have people running for our select board that have been putting a lot of stuff out there as far as, uh, I'd like to give a little clarity to the, maybe for the ninety percent to the people that have been dubbed as clueless. It all refers to, um, minutes from the meeting of, uh, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, where there was a former employee that sent an email to the select board members making false accusations. A lot of slanderous attacks against me, um. I have all the documentation that cleared my name of any wrongdoing. One of the select board members was Neil Russell at the time, he's running again, um. Even though there's a five-member board, Neil can never accept that, uh, all the accusations were proven wrong. And I don't think that Neil would be in the best interest to represent the town because he has personal agendas. And the ninety percent of the clueless probably aren't gonna get represented properly. So I would strongly suggest, uh, if anyone wants to go over the correct documentation of what happened, uh, with his regards to the April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, I'd be happy to sit down with anyone. It's a little bit late right now. I was kind of hoping that there would have been a, a major candidate's meeting, but I guess, uh, there wasn't enough people interested for the involvement in it. So that tells me right there that maybe we have some people that really don't have an interest in representing the town, but do have an interest in trying to field their own, uh, personal agendas from taking a seat on that board. Thank you.
Any additional business to come before the meeting?
No questions.
Jenny Talke Maniac, I just wanted to see if, uh, any representatives from the library can fill, um, us in on what's going on with the big library project. There might be people here that don't know about it or don't know the details. And I, I know they've done a lot of work to acquire a building to house a new library, and I wonder if he can hear some background as far as, uh, how much money we have uh, received as a town in grants to cover that, and what kind of expenses or needs we'll have to accomplish. If somebody's available to do that, I'd be appreciative.
Hi, Crystal Hire, uh, Chair of the Library Board, my excellent.
Right here.
Shout at it. Now, I'm gonna stand right. So, uh, yeah, so I'm Chair of the Library Board, we have other board members here, I think, uh, Kimberly, a librarian is also here. So, uh, you probably received a mailing in your mailbox in the last month or so, um, announcing, sort of, and giving you this sort of squeeze on the project, but basically we, the library board has been working for, well, since twenty thirteen, really, is when we started in conjunction with the building committee at the time, which was tasked with kind, and the building committee even existed well before that, sort of tasked with, as Patty had mentioned before, many of the infrastructure needs of the town that are longstanding and just trying to figure out how we're gonna manage them, being the town garage and town office and transfer station and the library being one of those things on the list. So we worked for a long time with the larger building committee around a building at the corner where the current town office stands. And there was a vote on a project that was voted down uh, for, uh, like a multi-use building on the corner, and that, so that was not approved by voters, so we all kind of all went back to the drawing board. And the select board took up the town office only sort of tack on the, on the project, and so the library also kind of went back to the drawing board and looked at a number of options, including our issues primarily around space, around AD accessibility, around being able to provide the services that we want for the town in the way that we wanna do it. So we analyzed a number of op, of options and decided that make, we need more space. Initially, we, we had sort of taken the tack of trying to expand in our current space. Uh, but then a couple of things sort of happened along the way. There became some, some ARCA money that was targeted for libraries in small rural communities that was given to the state of Vermont, the Department of Libraries. That money was announced, so that became, uh, an opportunity to access, for some order funding, so we could expand our space without, uh, asking the taxpayers for money, because the town office building was a big project, as everybody knows. And so we didn't feel like it was feasible to be able to meet our goals of expanded space through asking taxpayers for more money, so we needed to figure out how to manage that. And so that, that grant came along, which was amazing, and we decided that we would make an application as, along this, around the same time, many different things happened. The Catholic Church, the previous Catholic Church, Saint Anne's, two doors down from the library, uh, became available, they stopped using it as a church, and the diocese decided to, there's a word for it, which isn't decommissioned, but decommissioned. Uh, that church has a space that they would use for worship, and we immediately reached out to the diocese to find out if it was something that they would consider selling. Uh, and we negotiated with them over the course of probably a year or so before, two years before it became officially available to sell. Uh, we worked with the select board and talked with, we also big huge deal is that we were also approached by some anonymous donors who also had a similar idea of utilizing that space. They also didn't know at the time whether or not it would be available, but, um, they kind of had that idea at the same time, they said they would be willing to finance the purchase of that building for an expanded library and community center type of space. Um, so again, we continued to work with the diocese and work with the select board as far as being able to purchase that building with the donated monies. Um, and then everything kind of hit a pause because the diocese, the, uh, bishop got a new job, he got promoted, and so that we had to just wait for a year while they got a new bishop and got him up to speed and got him all ready to sign up on things. So everything sort of was in a holding pattern on the church end of buying the, the Saint Anne's property. At the same time, we went forward with applying for grants through, through the Department of Libraries as the ARCA money is available to them. Uh, we've sort of put all our eggs in this, in the former Saint Anne's basket, and we just, we, we got, we got some designs for that space. We did a number of evaluations on it to make sure that it would be suitable for a library space, where there was structural engineering and all sorts of things that had to be evaluated, make sure that we, the, the vision is that the books would be on the second floor. So we needed to make sure that the structurally, that the building could hold up the weight of the books, which would be, it was sort of the priority thing. So we had a, a lot of work done, we had, we got a preliminary design done and an estimate done on that design, so that we know, we would know what to ask for in our right application. We then applied for a one point, we're gonna one point two nine. One point two nine dollar grants from the Department of Libraries Capital Improvement Fund in March of last year. Uh, we, we heard, I think it was June, June we were awarded. A little later. A little later. So we did, we got that one point two nine million dollars, some numbers are amazing. So we got that grant, uh, and then we were able
They gave us more than we asked.
Oh, right, there was, that's why they're all the grants that come from the state have a contingency built in, so we ended up, we actually got one point four fours, one point four, because they're fifteen percent and twelve percent contingency added on. So we, we secured that grant. Then, uh, the bishop got caught up to speed and we were able to move forward with the purchase, and we got, we started to go through the process of actually closing on the building. And we were able to work with the select board on the MRF, the Municipal Energy Resilience Program. Uh, grant first for the evaluation of the Saint Anne's Reliability about the energy needs. And then ultimately, a two hundred and twenty-five-ish thousand dollar grant to work on the energy efficiency. So we have a total of, do that math, Remy Carl, what is that? Just I have one point seven million dollars to renovate the Saint Anne's Church Building, which was purchased with donated monies. Um, and so currently we are working towards that. The first step was to remove, uh, a, a bunch of asbestos that was known to be in the building, so that all the floor, I don't know if you've been in the building, but the basement level, the floor tiles are all made of asbestos. And there's some asbestos in a couple of other places, the windows have some asbestos, which was a flood surprise. Um, but, so we're, that work will be happening, uh, in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll be moving forward with getting some contractors on, you know, on, so we can expect to be doing the sort of the bulk of the work, probably depending on contractor scheduling, maybe into the, maybe the fall of this year. The whole thing has to be wrapped up by December of twenty-sixth. So that is our deadline with all the grant money, uh, but we feel like we can probably make that happen. Um, we have had some hiccups in the building of this, since we, we owned it, we had, we had a little bit of a flood, which we caught just in time, and so there was no lasting damage of that, and um, then, uh, the heat kind of went kaput, but we were able to manage that as well, so we are excited to, uh, to get moving on the major part of the construction in the fall. Um, I don't know if anybody else has any, any questions about anything, Herb?
Um, Herb, tell the select board, one of the things that is important to know about these grants, uh, many grants from state and federal agencies have what's called a match requirement. Where you are obligated to put up ten percent of the total project, or twenty-five percent of the total project, or whatever. It's still a huge benefit. Joe talked about that earlier with the grant that came, um, last year. That they received forty-one, but because there was a match requirement, they ended up having to spend forty-seven, right? Um, so it's a wonderful thing, but it actually ends up costing a little bit of money to sustain it. Both of these grants, the Department of Libraries grant and the, uh, uh, MRF grant are zero-match grants, which are really, really rare. So we are obligated to no matching funds on any of these projects. This is money that has really appeared through the work of a lot of folks locally to, um, uh, petition the state governments for programming that, you know, and the effect that we got one point four million dollars is an amazing thing.
I think we were one of the larger grants.
The largest grants.
Yes, one of the larger grants. They gave, I think, fourteen.
Yeah.
Um, primarily to smaller towns, but I think we were in the top maybe five, three or four. Uh, we were, we were quite large. We were excited to get the money and we were thrilled to do the project.
Right.
Um, obviously, it is a much larger building, it's six times the size of our current space. Uh, so I, I mentioned, so the, the second floor will be the library space with books. Uh, there's some construction around a conference room and an office for the librarian. Part of the grant was being able to provide what's this?
Remote education.
Right, so the grant was about, it, you know, it was post-COVID, so it's about telehealth, about remote work, remote education, about building resiliency at times of things like COVID in our current space. It was very difficult because it was so small, the six-foot distancing thing, you couldn't really even have two staff people in there, and nonetheless, any patrons, we did a a wonderful job providing a wonderful job providing services to the community through COVID. Through drop-offs and pickups and scheduling one person at a time and all of the things that we could do, but it was really difficult. We also don't have any air circulation. It's an old building. Uh, so that was a concern for, for staff and for folks in the building who are coming to use library services. So the new building, the upstairs will be the library space. The downstairs will be a community space, a community meeting room. There is a kitchen that's in there. I don't know if anybody's ever been in this space. It's been in town forever and ever, but the downstairs has a kitchen. We're keeping the kitchen so that we can have community dinners or community events and even like, you know, small people are saying, you know, small weddings or a family reunion or whatever, whatever. We don't know. We've never had space like that. We'll figure it out. Uh, so all of that comes with the potential for, um, you know, rental fees, things that we've never been able to really do before because our space has been so small. Um, so it isn't, so it's a larger space. It's going to cost more to maintain. That's obvious. So we are we are committed as a library board to making sure that we are very careful about what we ask taxpayers for. We're working really hard with a person who's volunteered their services as a capital campaign fundraiser. We're going to be launching a large capital campaign to be raising some money to cover soft rocks because the grants obviously only cover the, what's attached to the building. They don't cover furniture and other types of things. So we want to make sure that we achieve that. Um, we are also, I was gonna say something else. Did you have your hand up or no? Yeah, so.
There's some, the Martha, Martha man.
Yeah, so, oh, I know what it was. So the current library building is the other asset, which is owned by the town. And so that will be something that we will have to be having a conversation about with the select board, as the library board, with the community about how we utilize that. And, you know, potentially utilize that to offset any future cost of a larger building. Uh, so yeah, that, any questions or comments or additions?
Patty Canyon, I just want to say thank you. This, I'm so appreciative as a towns person to have this opportunity. Because knowing, having been on the first building committee since two thousand eight until we moved in in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-three, sorry. I understand how much work this takes and I, I feel it's, it's a really great opportunity. I really, I, I I wholeheartedly appreciate all your work and I can't wait for the new library. One thing I want to say though, that is that the, the library had had on the ballot for a few years, a twenty thousand dollar reserve fund for facilities. That fund is what, they use that money to do those studies so that they could be in the position to get the grant and buy the building. And that's, that's, so this is just reiterating the question from earlier. That's the point of putting this money aside so that you have that money to use when an opportunity arises. So that was my spiel, but, but, but really it's thank you for all of this because we're
Did you have any other questions?
The one thing I'll add, um, is that, you know, we talked about the, the ground floor being sort of community space. Uh, I had a conversation today with representatives of the American Red Cross who are very excited about the opportunity of being able to offer disaster sheltering for people in the community. Um, given that there will be a commercial scale kitchen. Um, we had a lot of conversations around the way that the planned structure, the planned design already does a lot of work that Red Cross would want to see in a shelter. And so if we had, uh, any sort of a massive evacuation event to flood here or an enduring power outage in some section of the town. Um, we now have the opportunity for the Red Cross to pull up with a trailer, take that space over and offer sheltering capabilities that we've really never had the opportunity for. So it's a real blessing on a number of fronts that maybe we hadn't even thought at the beginning.
Is there any other business to come before this meeting? So if there's no other business to come before this assembly and there are no objections. This information meeting of our twenty twenty-five town meeting is recessed. I'll remind you that the town meeting will resume tomorrow, March fourth, twenty twenty-five at seven AM. Where in-person voting by Australian ballot and voting required by law to be by ballot will be transacted at the Middletown Springs Town Office Building at five South Street, Middletown Springs, Vermont. The in-person voting opportunity continues tomorrow until seven PM. Thank you for attending.